We are now live. Good evening, Wareham, and welcome to the Select Board meeting of November twenty first, two thousand twenty-three. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Chadwick?
Yes, tonight present is Ms. Whiteside, Mr. Bessie, Ms. Wertz, Mr. Slavin. Also with us is Mr. Bowen, absent tonight, and also myself, Jared Chadwick. Absent tonight is Mr. Sullivan.
We expect him, however, okay. Um, pledge of allegiance. Ron. Or did you do it last week? Ron, it's your turn.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Announcements, Mr. Slavin.
No.
Ms. Wertz?
No.
Mr. Bessie?
Um, yeah, just, just real quick. Um, Thanksgiving is a day and a half away. A great time to spend with family, friends, significant others, loved ones. Uh, I just want to wish everyone the best on that day. Uh, be safe, be happy, uh, and enjoy the time with family because, uh, family is, uh, very important. Um, and, uh, it's just an enjoyable day. I enjoy it. I get to see family. This is actually my second Thanksgiving. I had one on Saturday with one half of the family, uh, and I will have the second Thanksgiving with the other half on Thursday. Um, just an all-around good time. So just go out, have fun, but, you know, most importantly, let's be safe uh, and enjoy and understand what the, the true meaning of the, the day is. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Chadwick?
Uh, just going to add on to Ron's, uh, thing there is, uh, Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. If you have extra food, bring it to the homeless. Um, same thing goes for, uh, police EMS and fire. If you guys have extra food those days, um, you know, they're out on the road. They don't have time to cook. They also can't stop because everything's closed. Um, yes, the EMS and yes, the fire have refrigerators. Uh, so they usually bring in a lot of their own stuff. Um, but the police, not so much. Can't really fit a cooler in the front seat of the uh, cruiser. Um, so if you see them or if you see them at the station, feel free to drop off some, some stuff for them to keep their stomachs full. That's it.
Thank you. Um, I will say Happy Thanksgiving to everybody as well. The, um, it's, we're now into the season of giving and there are several churches that are having fairs. There are several different, um, charities that are having fairs that are asking for donations. Uh, if you do have something to spare, um, there's stuff a cruiser, there's stuff a bus, there's Damian's pantry, there's Turning Point. There are certainly the people who are first responders who, as Jared points out, don't get a vacation. Um, so there's, there's plenty of opportunities for Wareham to be exactly what Wareham is. One of the most sharing communities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So we will go with appointments and reappointments. Um, Sherry Quirk, please raise your hand. Tom Bicki, DJ Wilson, Linda Burke, Mike Poole, Denise Wolk, and Kwame Barti, please raise your hand. And um, Mr. Sullivan, Noah Sullivan, will ask you to join as a participant. That takes a second, so we'll get you into the meeting. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Um, Ms. Quirk, I'm going to ask you to speak to the, um, appointment process. I'm also going to give you an opportunity to ask that this board, um, take the number of associates from two to three, which is on our agenda under item seven E. No, yeah, seven E. Um, previously we had authorized you for seven full-time and two associates. So, um, each one of you, if you would identify yourself when we call on you. And, um, Ms. Quirk, we'll start with you. And we don't see you and we don't hear you.
How about now?
There you, there you are.
Hello, my name is Sherry Quirk. And I'm joining as a potential member of the Alternative Energy Committee. And, uh, this committee has been in formation, uh, for a bit of time, and I think we have assembled a group of applicants that will, uh, do a good job of carrying the crown to the next phases of uh, establishing its alternative energy future. So, um, my only request at the appropriate time would be that we expand the number of associate members to eight. There are two associate members, I'm sorry, to three.
To three, right.
Um, and, um, the reason for that is that we have several associate members, not, not here tonight, but we hope will be appointed who are members of the fire department, both onset and Wareham. And, uh, would like to add, uh, a third associate as a member of the community or otherwise representative community.
Okay, um, so I'm going to ask for a motion to change the number on the committee from seven full-time and two associates to seven full-time and three associates. May I have that motion?
So made.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, somebody's having a back talk on, I can hear too many people speaking. Uh, no, no, no. So Tricia, you did that and, and Ron, you seconded. Okay, excellent. Um, all of, is there any discussion on moving the associate number from two to three? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, um, do any of you have any questions of Ms. Quirk, who is up for an appointment to this committee? Yes, Mr. Chadwick?
Ms. Quirk, um, you said you have a onset firefighter and a uh, firefighter from Wareham Fire that are interested in being associate members? Yes, okay, all right, um, okay, that, that's really my only question.
Okay, any other questions of Ms. Quirk? Hearing none, I will ask that Tom Bicki, um, does anyone have any questions of Mr. Bicki? If you do, please let me know. Yes, Ms. Wertz?
I'd just like Mr. Bicki to introduce himself. I'm sure ninety-nine point nine percent of the town know you well, sir, but I have never met you. So, um, if you had two sentences you'd like to say to tell me about you with regards to why this is a good play for us, could you do that for me?
Yes. I'm a retired academic.
Can you identify yourself for the record, Mr. Bicki?
Yes, uh, Thomas Bicki. Uh, precinct three. I'm a resident of the town for over thirty years. I'm a retired academic. Um, I, my research in geology, hydrology, and hazardous materials, I think is a good fit for the committee with all the concerns people have about contamination of service water and groundwater. And that's my area of expertise professionally as an academic. And I think I could bring, uh, the environmental aspect to this committee.
Nice to meet you.
Any other questions of Mr. Bicki? Hearing none, I will go to Mr. DJ Wilson. Good evening, sir. Could you identify yourself for the record?
My name is DJ Wilson. I was a summer resident here for twenty years and then we moved down here full-time mid-COVID, uh, and have, and I just recently retired. I was a tobacco control director at Mass Municipal Association, so I know local government. Um, I was, when I lived in Malden, I was on the Board of Health as well, so I have served on a board in another city, in, in the city. And, um, I am a lawyer as well, so I, I've been interested in this. I have a summer power at home. And I was from nineteen seventy-five to nineteen seventy-seven, the president of the Marlborough High Ecology Club.
Oh, cool. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Wilson? No? Okay, we'll move on to Linda Burke. Would you identify yourself for the record, Ms. Burke?
Hi, I'm Linda Burke and I am interested in being a part of the community, of the committee, because I have been a resident of Wareham for about thirteen years. And I, as many people know, I work for the AD Megpiece Company. My background is in community relations and public relations. And, um, I've also done a great deal of grant writing. I hope I can bring some of that to the committee.
Any questions of Ms. Burke? Hearing none, I will go on. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms., Ms. Wertz?
So, Ms. Burke, if I can call you Linda, I think I met you once about a year ago. So I'm looking forward to getting to know you better. Um, I'd like to understand, um, how you feel the relationship between your employer and the town? How, how they can jointly be served by you being, um, part of this board? Or are, and/or are there some, uh, concerns you have about that?
Oh, I, I think it remains to be seen. Um, it's, we need to work through what the actual charge of the committee is, I believe, and um, the relationship of the, the company and the town, um, will be determined through that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions? No? Okay, we'll move on to Michael Poole. Mr. Poole, also known as the voice of the parade. Thank you so much for doing that. You were superb.
Thank you. It was my pleasure.
Could you identify yourself for the record, sir?
Sir, my name is Mike Poole. I've been a resident of onset for fifteen years. And I'm currently employed as a research, as the research director at the Responsible Offshore Science Alliance, which is a uh, science organization, um, working on issues of fish and fisheries and offshore wind. So I'm employed in a field of alternative energy. I'm a believer in alternative energy of solar panels on my house. Um, and I am, you know, as we decarbonize our economy, I'm very interested to see how the town can, what the town can do to, uh, to support decarbonization while maintaining, um, a, while keeping the town and maintaining the town in a way that we'd like it to be.
Excellent. Do any of you have any questions of Mr. Poole? No? Hearing none. We'll move on to Denise Wolk. Could I, you identify yourself for the record, Ms. Wolk?
Um, hi, yes, I'm in a car on my way from Logan. So, uh, my name is Denise Wolk. Um, I um, was a member of the Solar Bylaw Advisory Committee. Um, and so I bring that background with me, um, along with just a general interest in alternative energy and how we can use that in our town.
Excellent, thank you. Anybody have any questions of Ms. Wolk?
Just good to see you again.
Okay, I don't see Mr. Barti here. Um, Mr. Barti, if you are here under another name, could you raise your hand, please? Uh, we can do, I, I guess we should do each of the members individually because the terms are different. So I'll accept a motion, Mr. Chadwick, on if, unless anybody has any other questions of any about this committee. Presuming we populate this committee, um, I'm going to ask Ms. Quirk to let me know when she would like to have the first meeting because as chair, I have to start you off, give you your charge, et cetera, and you want to do it quickly because I'm going on vacation. I'll accept a motion, Mr. Chadwick.
All right, is there any, uh, any reason why I can not read them all and then vote on them all? Or you want to go one by?
Well, is is there, would every, would anybody object to having them all in one motion? And we will not vote on Mr. Barti. Okay.
As, as long as you list the terms for each one of them. Yes.
Okay, so, no, so we're going to do them one at a time. I'm sorry.
Okay. That's fine. All right, I move to appoint to the Alternative Energy Committee, Sherry Quirk, as a member with a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven.
There's a second? Motion made in second. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Ms., may I, you have a motion on Mr. Bicki, please?
I move to appoint, uh, to the Alternative Energy Committee, Mr. Tom Bicki, as a member, term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, it is so. May I have a motion on Mr. Wilson, please?
I move to appoint to the Alternative Energy Committee, Committee, uh, as a member, Mr. DJ Wilson, with a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to appoint Mr. Wilson. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. May I have a motion on Linda Burke, please?
I move to appoint, uh, to the Alternative Energy Committee, uh, Linda Burke, as a member, with a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Second. Motion made in seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
No.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, four, one, zero, it is so. May I have a motion on Mr. Poole, please?
I move to appoint to the Alternative Energy Committee, Michael Poole, as a member, with a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in seconded to appoint Mr. Poole. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes, even though I know him.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. May I have a motion, Ms. Wolk, please?
All right, I move to, uh,
I'm sorry.
Sorry, somebody's feedback was coming across loud. Uh, I move to appoint to the Alternative Energy Committee, uh, Denise Wolk, member, term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
There's a second. Motion made in seconded to appoint Ms. Wolk. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, it is so. We will not appoint Mr. Barti until we've had an opportunity to speak with him, and I do not see him. If he shows up later in the meeting, I'll come back to that.
Uh, well, um, Mr. Barti, I believe, was on the Conservation Commission.
That's correct.
I believe I reached out to ask him to join. I believe he has a conflict. That's why he's not here today. You know, unless someone has a real issue with him, I think we might as well go ahead.
We have made it a point not to appoint people particularly to a brand-new committee without interviewing them. We, we had that practice, so I would suggest we follow that practice.
Okay, never mind.
Okay, um, Ms. Quirk, I'll hear from you when you, uh, choose, because we'll have to arrange meeting times and rooms and everything for you, so I'll look forward to hearing from you.
We, we have a date that we've selected, December twelfth, if that works for you.
Okay, can you send me an email?
I will.
Okay, thanks, and we'll get it posted. Mr. Slavin?
I just want to make a comment. When this committee was first, uh, discussed, I know for myself, I had reservations about, you know, how it would work and how it would affect the town function, et cetera. But with the battery storage, uh, issues that have come up out of nowhere and all the different things, uh, this committee becomes instead of something that may or may not work, it's going to become extremely important. The insurance companies are already canceling insurance on people who put battery storage inside their garages, you know, for solar panels and other things. So there's going to be a lot of change on rules, regulations, et cetera. And it's going to affect how the town functions. So I'm looking forward to how this committee functions and keeps up with the rapid changes going on.
Thank you. Good evening, um, members, and thank you very much. Mr. Sullivan, would you remove them and let um, Judy Jensen Riegel, would you raise your hand, please, and Mr. Steph, Stephenson or Stephenson, could you raise your hand, please? I apologize for not being able to pronounce your last name.
I know, I, I shut the video off, so, um, okay.
Judy keeps bouncing in and out. Is that what's going on here? Mr. Stephenson, can you pronounce your last name for me, please?
Stephenson.
Stephenson, I apologize, sir. Um, we'll talk with you first. Uh, Mr. Stephenson is here to get a fortune teller's license. It would be a brand-new one. All of his paperwork is in order. Mr. Stephenson, would you put, like to address the board, sir?
I moved to Wareham, uh, ten years ago. Uh, I applied for this license simply for the, the novelty of the thing. I paid my two dollars.
Hey, does anybody have any questions, Mr. Stephenson? Ms. Wertz?
Mr. Stephenson, I don't think you probably need this, but I just want to double-check. Does, does a, um, license for your interest area of fortune tellers, does that require you to have insurance or any other backup?
No.
Judith says no.
Nope.
So that's a good thing, huh?
Um, I'll accept a motion, Mr. Chadwick. Unless somebody has any questions of the gentleman? Mr. Chadwick?
I move to grant a fortune teller's license to Cedric Jean Stephenson, uh, with a term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
There's a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Um, I, I'll go for a roll call vote. The terms of these appointments are for one year, so we're giving it to you for one year and one month, just so that you don't have to, you know, come back again, but it is an annual license, sir. So any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Um, the paperwork, um, would be ready probably on Tuesday. Town Hall is closed tomorrow, Thursday, and Friday, so I'm guessing the paperwork might be ready on Tuesday, sir, to pick up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Enjoy your evening and have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks, you too.
You're welcome. Uh, Ms. Jensen Riegel, would you identify yourself for the record, please?
Muted.
You're muted and your video is off. If you could turn them back on, please. And Mr. Sullivan, would you let Ms. Gremo and Ms. Nichols, if they would both raise their hand, let them into the meeting, please? Ms. Jensen Riegel, we can neither see you nor hear you. Ah. Yes, there you are. Okay, so we can't hear you. We can see you, but we can't hear you. Down at the bottom of your screen, to the left, there's a little thing that looks like a microphone.
Unless you're using an iPad top right.
Are you, yeah. Are you using a computer or an iPad? Uh, iPhone, okay, iPhone, okay. Um, I know that, um,
I got it.
Oh. Hi, would you identify yourself for the record, please? Are you the, you're the lady with the wonderful dog, right?
Yes.
Oh, awesome. Would you identify yourself for the record? You're an applicant for the, um, appointment to the Council on Aging. Would you identify yourself and speak to us?
Okay, my name is Judith Jensen Riegel. And I've been a resident of Wareham for over forty years. I just retired within the last year, not quite a year yet. Um, I have a therapy dog that I take over to the All-American Assistant Living, and then I bring into the COA. And I also take into our high school for, uh, emotionally disturbed teenagers, uh, once a week. Um, I would like to expand, um, my volunteering. I also volunteer with, uh, Chair Yoga with Pam on Wednesdays at the COA. So, um, I just want to be able to sit on the board and find out the new things that are coming up and, and I have some new ideas myself, so I think I could contribute to them.
Awesome. Any questions of Ms. Jensen Riegel? And her dog is beautiful, I have to say. Any questions of the young lady? I will accept a motion.
Okay, I move to appoint to the Council on Aging, Judy Jensen Riegel, as a member, with a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. Second.
Motion made in seconded to appoint. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Um, the paperwork probably won't be available until Tuesday. Because you are going on to the Council on Aging, we require that you have a core report, but you probably have one if you're going in and out of the school anyway. Okay.
I have to have one done for you too, right?
You, you have to, if you have a current one, just bring that with you.
Okay.
It, it, you probably had to have one for the school.
Yes, I've had one right along.
Okay, um, yeah, if you have a copy of it, that would be fine. If not, then we'll ask you to do another one. We'll give you the paperwork to do another one.
Yeah, I think, I think the school has it, so, um, I probably will have to do another one.
Okay. Thank you. And enjoy your, um, enjoy your holiday. Thank you very much.
Have a wonderful, uh, Thanksgiving yourself. Bye-bye.
Goodbye. Okay, we are going to go now.
Did we vote?
Didn't we just vote?
Yes.
I thought we did.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, yes, I have, as Slavin, I think in five zero zero.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Um, so we are not appointing Kwame Barti or Deneen Rose because they didn't show up this evening and we'll put them on an agenda for the future. We are now going to go to item seven D, which is a tax classification hearing. Mr. Chadwick, may I have a motion to open the hearing, sir?
Seven D.
Mm-hmm.
I move to open the hearing on the tax classification hearing.
Is there a second to opening the hearing?
Second.
Motion made in seconded to open the hearing. Going to go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, the hearing is now open. I'm going to ask Ms. Nichols and Ms. Gremo to introduce themselves, and then I'm going to turn the meeting over to Ms. Nichols, who has forwarded a presentation to us, but she will be making the presentation again. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Deb.
Hi, Deb Primo, Town Clerk.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jackie Nichols. I'm the Director of Assessing, hoping you can all hear me well. Um, I'm going to attempt to share my screen and put the presentation up on this laptop that I'm not familiar with. How's that? Everybody see that?
Perfect.
Great. Okay. Um, this evening, we are here to talk about and set the tax policy for the town of Wareham for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. I, we have received final approval for the values from the Department of Revenue. So this will be the final necessary vote. Um, I just want to touch again on the classes of, um, property that we have. Uh, res, under residential, a single-family condominiums, um, mobile homes that are on their own lot, um, not in the parks, multifamily apartments and residential land. Under the commercial, industrial, and personal property, which we refer to as the CIP, we have office and retail, industrial manufacturing, commercial industrially-zoned land, and chapter land and personal property, both business and second both business and second homes. Though the purpose of the tax classification hearing is to determine whether the town will continue to utilize a single rate for all classes of property or to split the rate, shifting the burden towards the commercial, industrial and personal property from the residential. We've talked about this over the past and generally an eighty percent residential versus a twenty percent CIP share of the overall property makeup is when we start to have the conversation about considering a split rate. The reason we look at that as a kind of a benchmark is that any shift under that would result in a very small benefit to a residential customer and then a larger burden for the CIP taxpayer without having the proper support in the tax base. We have not yet reached that threshold, as a matter of fact, where we seem to be inching upwards a little bit with the residential. And that's due to the market that we have seen over the past years, where the residential has climbed much higher and faster than the commercial. I have added a little chart this year, which shows the CIP breakdown, just so you can see how much of the CIP ratio of fourteen point five percent is in each category. The commercial is seven point eight percent, the industrial is one point seven, and the personal property is five percent. Our, our residential to CIP ratios have stayed relatively steady over the past fourteen years. Our fiscal twenty twenty four single family residential value has risen again to four hundred and twenty four thousand dollars rounded. The average commercial value is seven thirty seven and the average industrial is seven ninety six. Last year, our average single family value was three seventy eight, commercial was seven twenty four and industrial was seven sixty four. For the chart below, I've used the average single family and commercial values to kind of illustrate what a shift would do. At the one point oh residential factor, which means not a split rate, we're looking at an estimated tax rate this year of nine dollars and twenty three cents. That is down from nine dollars and ninety two cents last year. And again, that won't be finalized until the DOR has looked at everything once the town submits the recap, which happens after this. The, based on the four hundred and twenty four thousand average single family home and the nine dollars and twenty three cent tax rate, we would be looking at nine, thirty nine hundred and fourteen dollars tax bill. At the lowest shift of one point one, residential would save sixty eight dollars and the commercial bill would increase six hundred and seventy eight dollars. At the highest possible shift of one point five, the residential property would save three thirty one, but the commercial property would raise three thousand, three hundred and ninety eight dollars. Does anybody have any questions so far? I know I'm blowing through this, so stop me if you need it. This is just a chart that I did to kind of illustrate the difference between the savings versus the commercial increase. So the summary and considerations at this point, because of the booming residential market and the, the stabilization at like eighty five versus fourteen point five, it's, the Board of Assessors would recommendation that we can consider keeping the single rate. A split rate does not increase the revenue. It simply shifts the burden onto the commercial class. A shift would make Wareham less attractive to newer development and small business relocation. And it would also impact summer cottage residents. And also, many of the town's commercial properties are leased and landlords would typically pass the increases on to tenants, thus impacting our smaller businesses, which are typically locally owned. Business personal property would also be taxed at the higher commercial rate. And chapter land, including cranberry bogs and recreational land, would be taxed at the higher commercial rate. Those, I'm referring to those that are in the chapter land program. I also put in your, in your presentations, some community comparisons to kind of show where we are in relation to some of our neighbors in similar communities and also at the state. For twenty twenty three, of course, this is the data from last year because all of twenty fours are not in yet for our three hundred and fifty one communities in the state. But for last year, the single, the average tax bill for the state was a little over seven thousand dollars. I have presented the information on Bourne, Carver, Marion, Matipoiset, Middleborough, Plymouth, Rochester, and then finally Wareham. You can see that our single family tax bill average was thirty seven fifty. That was based on an average single family value of three seventy eight, zero, three, six, which was last year's. And we have gone up a little, a few single family parcels. But everybody else pretty much has as well. Excuse me. Are there any questions on this? By the way, I will ask Matt when he gets back to put this presentation on the web. So if anybody wants to see it.
Any questions? No, keep going, Jackie.
Okay, and finally, just a history of where we've been with our average values for single family, industrial and commercial from two thousand fifteen through two thousand twenty four. And that's just for your general information.
Thank you. Do any of you have any questions of Ms. Nichols? Please. Ms. Ms. Words?
I actually have a comment. Jackie, you and I've talked about this one on one. You've educated me a lot on it, but I look at what I see here and what I hear from citizens and what our situation is in the town regarding charging different fees to the citizens. We recently at town meeting had a vote to take care of the sewer issues for basically the half of town that is on sewer right now. That will raise costs for that half. We also know there's going to be a number of other things coming down the line regarding sewer and more charges to everybody. Because the difference is not insignificant, but it's not big. I believe we as a citizen base, as a, as a town government, have to find a way to make our citizens believe that we will pay back and give back a little bit to them when we can.
Okay, Ms. Words, do you have a question?
This we could. So my question, Jackie, is can we do that or is this set no matter what we think?
I'm, I'm, I guess, what is the question? Are you talking about exemptions? Are you talking about?
I'm talking about single fee, not difference for residential versus industrial. I'm talking about the difference that there are people in this town who've wanted to change that for years, as well as there have been people who never want to change it. We're in a situation right now where if we can give something back to the citizen, how little it is, it would be good. Are we set with what we're going to do for our, our tax structure, no matter what? This is, we're telling you, this is the way it is, too bad.
Well, first of all.
I don't, was that a question?
That is a question.
The, the presentation this evening is to discuss whether the board is going to vote to maintain a single rate or consider a split rate.
Okay, that is what we're doing.
I understand what, what you're saying is some people are seeing some of the new development and saying, well, why can't we, you know, shift the burden? But if you looked at what the average commercial is at, it's not multimillion dollar stuff. We're, we're not a larger city. We only have a small percentage of commercial. Seven point eight percent. So if we were to shift that over to the commercial, then we might be talking about doing some other things, like a small commercial exemption and so forth and so on. But at this point, it's that sixty eight dollars that we're making a, a commercial pay three hundred and eighty dollars for. I, I'm not sure that that's going to make a difference in the world of the sewer changes. Do you see what I'm saying?
No, I'm talking about make a difference in how the town citizens feel about, are they always just asking to be spent more or does sometimes the town give back to them?
I don't think, I don't think that's a question that she could answer. She's really here to get us to vote one way or the other, to either support the single rate or to change it and shift it the burden. But what the presentation has come across as is that at eighty percent, and we're climbing beyond that, the percentages, that the recommendation from the Board of Assessors, as well as from the Chief Assessor, is to keep the rate the same. Is that correct, Ms. Miss?
That is correct.
Okay. Mr.
If we were, if we were, if I could, just for a minute, if we were to consider to do a split rate, we would want to look at perhaps doing a small commercial exemption. That type of stuff needs time to be implemented because mixed use properties have to be properly allocated. It's not something we're set up to do right now because we never done it. If we're going to do a small commercial exemption to help our smaller businesses, that is something that needs time and applications and information to implement. So it would have to be a process. I'm not saying that we shouldn't consider it in the future. I think that we are not in a place yet where it's possible to do so. If we do a small commercial exemption, that puts all the burden on the industrial and we only have less than two percent industrial. It's very hard to sustain that.
Thank you. Mr. Slaven, you had a question? And Mr. Bessie, I'll go to you next.
It's not a question. We've gone through this quite a few years. The problem is that to make any kind of real substantial savings to the residential component, the commercial effect is a lot, lot more draconian. It's a lot more. The, the type of businesses Wareham has on the commercial aspect is where the economy is the most favorable in the last few years. If all you have to do is go over to the mall and look at how many empty stores there are in the mall right now. And this is Christmas season. Normally, they survive through Christmas and then they fail. If you look at some of the major big box stores, not just in Wareham, but in the state and nationally, they started to fail. What you're asking to do will not work right now financially. It's not enough of a savings. If you could save three to five hundred dollars per resident on their residential tax, it'd be fine. But the cost to the other side is, is just not feasible right now. It just doesn't work. As far as sewer goes, we should eliminate that from any thought process simply because whether you're in commercial property or whether you're residential, we're all involved in the sewer. We're all going to get hit with it. And normally, commercial gets hit at a higher amount because they don't have one EDU. They have multiple EDUs on the commercial. So in my point of view, from a financial standpoint, at this particular time, it makes no sense to change what we're doing because we're not able to save the average citizen enough money, except maybe a ten cups of coffee.
Okay, Mr. Bessie, you're next.
So, yeah.
I remind you, I would really like you to have questions of the young lady.
So I, I guess my, my question would be, I mean, I, I do think that at some point, a split tax rate, you know, would be good. I know that we don't have enough business in this town to support it. But, you know, my question, I, I guess, is in the, in the long term, to, to your point about potentially breaking it down to, you know, commercial mixed use and all, how much time do you think that that would take to be able to break down a plan of what that would look like to potentially implement that at some time in the future?
If you can answer that question.
If it's just a matter of splitting the rate, probably a year. Well, I mean, you know, I could do it next year. But if we want to implement a small commercial exemption along with the split rate, that would take a couple of years because that requires applications from businesses and dealing with the state on which ones might qualify. They have to have a certain number of employees and they have to be a certain value, so forth, so on. That would take a while and it would take some manpower, too.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chadwick, you had a question?
Yes, just to verify this, so I can understand it correctly. So split rate basically means you'd be taxing commercial properties at a higher rate. All right, and then obviously with the, the small commercial. Exempt, no exemption, but the small commercial would be able to send in paperwork, kind of like for a relief.
We would have to, it, it, they're two completely separate things. If they're going to split the rate, that's one thing. Then if we were going to adopt as a town, a small commercial exemption, that's a whole nother thing. So they're, they're two completely separate things.
Right. All right, the, the reason I ask is because the small commercial exemptions are the ones that have no problem donating to youth programs, but the big box stores are the ones that say, no, you have to go to corporate all the time. So honestly, in my opinion, I say tax the hell out of the big box stores and leave the small ones alone.
Unfortunately, we can't pick and choose whom we, we put the burden on. And if we do a commercial exemption, it's something we need to remember is that shifts that burden onto industrial and we have less than two percent industrial. So we should develop some more industrial and get a good base for what we want to do in the future.
Thank you. Any other questions of Ms. Nichols? Is there anyone in the audience who has a question of Ms. Nichols? Please raise your hand. I'll ask again, is there anyone in the audience who has a question of Ms. Nichols? I see none, Mr. Chadwick, am I correct?
I see none either.
Okay, then I'll accept a motion to close the hearing, sir.
All right, I move to close the hearing for the tax classification.
Is there a second to the motion to close the hearing?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to close the hearing. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Words?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, the hearing is closed. I will now accept a motion and the motion, presuming you want to keep the single tax rate the same, would be I move to maintain the single tax rate as presented by the Chief Assessor.
So moved. I'm moved.
Second to that motion? Is there?
I'll second this, Jared.
Okay.
So we're going to adopt a residential factor of one point zero for fiscal twenty twenty four.
Same as last year.
Then, then I'm going to ask you to restate the motion, Mr. Slaven. Did you just, or Mr. Chadwick, you just mimicked what she said, right? You're going to adopt, okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion to maintain the one point zero?
Residential factor.
Residential factor for two thousand twenty four. Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Words?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Ms. Gremo, do you need documentation from us? Or Ms. Nichols, do you need documentation for? Documentation from us other than the vote or certified vote or anything like that?
I don't need anything.
Okay, great. Then thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
Bye bye. Bye.
Bye. Mr. Slaven, are you?
Yes. I just wanna ask that sometime uh. After the first of the year, we put on the agenda to talk about this actual. Tax rate, et cetera. So if we wanna have a change. You know, as the board makeup changes as well, that we sit down and actually have a workshop or have something where. We come up with a game plan that gives our assessor. Uh guidelines of what she needs to do and where, so she can work with the town administrator to put the things in place that. So she can actually have something to come back to us with.
Okay.
I second that.
So noted. Okay, um, we're going back to um licenses and permits. Mr. Chadwick, I'm gonna ask you. To make one motion for six B. Which would be. Um, and I will note that on the agenda, it says for the year twenty twenty three, obviously, these are licenses for the year twenty twenty four, so that is a scribbler's error. So you, your motion will be, I move the renewal of blah, blah, blah.
Yes, I move to approve the year round common Vic uh license. All alcohol beverage license for the year twenty twenty four. Under the provision of chapter one thirty eight, the master general law as listed on the agenda, one through four. With the provision that all inspections are complete, all fees paid, and the appropriate A B C and L L A numbers are included.
There are second to that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Words?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes, it is so. I'm sorry.
Second.
It doesn't matter.
I do.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, I'll accept a motion on C.
Yes, I move to renew. Of the following annual entertainment licenses, weekdays only, under the provision of M G L, chapter one forty section. One eighty three A as listed. Uh. One through six.
Seven.
Yeah, one through seven. Hey, I've still learn those. One through seven. Uh, providing that uh all inspections are complete, all fees are paid, and appropriate A B C L A numbers are included.
There's a second motion, motion made and seconded. The um new license that you have. For Bebo's, which is number seven. Um, his license time would end at one A M, including on Sundays, okay? And that is concurrent with what he has asked for for his common Vic license. So. Other than that, all of them are renewals. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Words?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes, it is so. Mr. Chadwick, I'll try for an motion under D, please. Now, these are Sunday licenses. Sunday licenses, thank you to the blue laws, are issued by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We do the paperwork for them. We send them the check.
Okay, I move to approve the renewal of the following annual entertainment licenses, Sundays only, under the provision. Of Master General Law, chapter one three six, one through six. Uh, as listed in the agenda, um, providing that all inspections are complete, all fees paid, and all paperwork is in.
There are second to that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Words?
Yes.
Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Mr. Chadwick, I'll go for a motion on E, which are package stores. Known in Massachusetts as Packies.
Packies. Uh, I'm not sure about that.
Uh huh. If you're from Massachusetts. The only place in the world that's what they're known as. Go ahead, Mr. Chadwick.
Yes, alright, I move. To approve the renewal of the following year round retail package goods stores, all alcohol beverages licensed for the year twenty twenty four. Under the provision of chapter one thirty eight of the Mass General Laws, uh, as listed on the agenda. For one through eleven, uh, as long as all inspections are complete, all fees are paid, and all paperwork is turned in.
As well as the. The A B C C license number and the L L A number are present. Is that your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Words?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mrs. Slaven?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Mr. Chadwick, um, item F, I will note that it should be twenty twenty four. And and I will ask you to make one motion, please.
Alright, I move to approve the year round renewal of the following. Common Vic license for the year of twenty twenty four and the provisions of chapter one forty. Of the Massachusetts General Laws, uh, for numbers one through eleven. Uh, as listed on the agenda, uh, provisions that are all inspections are complete, all fees paid, and the appropriate A B C C and L L A. Numbers are included. And all paperwork is.
Is there a second to that motion? Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion to grant the renewals? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Words?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Mr. Chadwick, I will ask you to make a motion on item G, which is class one licenses.
Okay, I move to approve the renewal of the following class one licenses for the year twenty twenty four and the provisions of chapter one forty. Of Massachusetts General Laws. For one through three as listed in the agenda. Uh, providing that all inspections are complete, all fees paid, and all the appropriate paperwork is turned in.
There are second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion to grant? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Words?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, we will not be acting on the renewal of the class two licenses. Nor on the class three licenses. They will be on a future agenda. They will be on the agenda of the twelfth of December. So I will now move on to. Um, the homeless Memorial Day proclamation. This is something that we have issued for a couple of years. Um, at the request of Wareham. Hmm. Um, help me out, Ms. Words? Um. Uh, that that church group headed by Chuck McCullough.
Uh, um.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, Mr. Um, Chadwick, can you read it? The. Um, proclamation, which is probably the third page from the end of the earth.
Yes, alright, National Homeless Persons Memorial Day pro- uh proclamation. Whereas the winter months pose extreme hardship for citizens who are less fortunate and without homes or adequate housing. Whereas in the season of generosity and sharing, citizens of the town of Wareham are encouraged to commit themselves to promoting compassion and concern for all. Whereas of this date in the United States, over five hundred thousand people experience homelessness. Whereas homeless persons are three to four times more likely to die than the general population. Whereas hunger and homelessness continue to be seriously challenged for more citizens who have the right to adequate food, housing, clothing. And safety. Whereas December twenty first, twenty twenty three marks the first day of winter and the longest night of the year. Whereas we ask the residents of the town of Wareham to join together, remember our neighbors. And honor their lives by working to provide solutions to end homelessness. Therefore, we, the Wareham Select Board, do hereby designate December twenty first, twenty twenty three to be National Homeless Person Memorial Day. To remember those who have died homeless and to encourage citizens to come together to celebrate their lives. Sign the Wareham Select Board.
Thank you. There, I believe, is going to be a vigil, um, I'm guessing it's outside of Turning Point. On the twenty first, which of course is the longest night of the year. Thank you, Mr. Chadwick. Um, we have a discussion and possible vote to allow the garden club to put some signs up. Mr. Chadwick may have a motion on that one, please.
Yeah, I move to uh approve, or excuse me, I move to. Yeah, approve uh to allow the Wareham Garden Club to place signs promoting their Christmas fair on December second, twenty twenty three.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to um approve those, that request. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Words?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. We did the alternative energy. Um, Mr. Sullivan did not make it to tonight's meeting, but he did email me. Um, he, under his report, this evening, he was going to. Ask that we um vote to keep the trash rates exactly the same. Um.
So moved.
Uh, but it would be on next week's agenda for a confirmatory vote. Um, I'm not sure we can take a vote on that, Mr. Bowen. It's it's not really forty eight hour business. It was a. An email from the town administrator to me, asking me to read it into the record. Can we do that and then confirm it next week?
Yes, that'd be fine.
Okay, fine. I'll go ahead, Mr. Chadwick. To keep the trash rates the same.
Alright, I move to keep the trash rates the same as they currently are. Uh, for twenty twenty four?
Yes, sir. Is there a second to that motion?
Again.
Motion made and seconded to keep the trash rates the same. Um, he has a, he has a very full presentation which he will give us. Nah, he won't give it next week. He will be giving us the information. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote. Ms. Words?
Yes.
Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Are we voting? I don't think we should be voting as if we're confirming it.
No, we're gonna confirm it next week.
Well, we're we're voting for what the. What, you know, Jared put forth, so this is just to say that we're interested in going ahead with it. I think we should wait till Derek does his presentation next week to actually vote on it. We're putting the horse before the cow.
But Mr. Bowen just said it was okay.
I think he had the reverse on that. It's what he said.
Mr. Bowen?
Well, you can do it, but you're going to ultimately have to take a confirmatory vote on it. So it it's really up to you how you wanna handle it.
It just doesn't make sense to me, that's all.
It's already on the agenda for next week for a confirmatory vote because I had to post the agenda today.
Understand.
I expected him this evening. To make his report. Okay, I'm gonna go for a roll call vote. Ms. Words?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Abstained.
Okay, Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thanks. Okay, um, Alan. Uh, liaison initiative reports, Ms. Words?
I don't have anything that comes right up top to mind right now.
Mr. Bessie?
Uh. I have nothing tonight.
Mr. Slaven?
Okay, um, I'm going to have, didn't think you were gonna get away with it, did you?
Yeah, I I I knew that.
Uh, I've had, I basically, Solernos has reached out to me, John, about trying to come up with a bus service. For the onset, you know, village area, uh, for nighttime service during the weekdays and especially the weekends. The idea is maybe to pull people out of uh Baypoint Development and the areas around there where there are people that wanted would come to. Onset, and we all know that if you wanna come to onset, the parking is almost impossible. So I basically uh sat down with Gatra last weekend, this week, and we've put together a meeting that will be next week. In which we'll sit down and discuss the possibilities of how we do this. Is there gonna be funding available through the state? Because the state has given the regional transportation organizations extra money for the coming year. Uh, it's really, you know, the idea is pretty simple, but it makes a lot of sense. Anybody who's listening tonight. That has a large subdivision, you know, a lot of people there are different organizations or groups that. Think they might be interested is to get ahold of me, leave me a message through the Selectance Office, so I can add it in to give some idea what the volume might be. And uh, that's really it for tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Chadwick?
None.
And myself, none. Thank you. Um, I'm going to let us know that we're going into executive session. I'll accept a motion in a minute. We will be. Um. Adjourning from the executive session. May I have a motion, please, Mr. Chadwick?
Yes, uh, I move to go into the executive session, Master General Law thirty nine, twenty three B.
Reason number three. Is there a second to that motion? Motion made and seconded, um. And I do declare the necessity of going into executive session. I will ex- uh go for a roll call vote. Ms. Words?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven? Ms. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, we will be taking a five minute recess, which means that we will be back here at eight. Ten, that's a four minute recess. In the meantime, Mr. Sullivan, Noah Sullivan, will be. Uh, clearing the audience and shutting off the recording. So I'm gonna give you four minutes until eight minutes, eight, ten. And we'll see you in a couple of minutes.